January 6th, Planning and Move Board. It's 2015, we've flipped the year. The Planning Board meeting to order. First, on the agenda are the minutes of December 9.
I recommend approval for the minutes of December 9 as submitted.
Second?
I'm moving seconded. Any questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. We move on to approval not required plans. And these are plans received between December 10 and January 6. So we have one, the applicant is Robert Fallon, to reconfigure lot lines between two existing lot lines located in 71 and 75 Little Island Road, Falmouth. Engineering firm is Holmes &amp; McGrath. And you have it in front of you. And as you can see, as so often happens, the, it's just a switch of two little triangles of land. Any questions on this? Okay. May I have a motion to endorse the approval not required?
I'm moving endorse this approval not required.
Second?
Moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Next on our agenda, we have a decision. The applicant is the Francisco Friars for a special permit to subdivide three lots into two lots with 75% lot width at Lot 27 Uncatina North and Lot 51 Noshon North Road. All right, Noshon North, North Falmouth.
Just before you start the motion, let me just point out a few things for the board.
Okay.
In your package tonight, you have a revised motion. Most of it is the typographical errors in paragraphs 1 and 2. And at the end of paragraph 3, we added a sentence for you, the last sentence. The subject property is not within a water resource protection district nor within 300 feet of an estuary. Those are findings necessary to make as part of your special permit that we had made from the previous version. And we also added, you make the findings under section 216. Two last sentences of paragraph 3.
There's also another one, Brian. The third line down in this paragraph, you added on as required by section 240-67, point A footnote 4.
I added that at your request.
Yeah. To make that more explanatory as to what was going on. Okay. Could I have somebody make the motion, please?
Want me to read it?
Sure.
Okay. January 2nd, 2015, St. Anthony Shrine Order of Friars Minor Providence of the Most Holy Name. Motion that the Planning Board vote to approve the special permit application of the St. Anthony Shrine Order of Friars Minor Providence of the Most Holy Name under Article 14, Dimensional Regulations, Chapter 240 of the zoning bylaw of the Town of Falmouth for a plan entitled Plan of Land, being a redivision of lots 27, 28A, and 51 as shown on Land Court Plan 11683-F, prepared for St. Anthony Shrine Order of Friars Minor Providence of the Most Holy Name, West Falmouth, Mass., prepared by Holmes &amp; McGrath Inc., dated September 16, 2014, scale 1 inch equals 20 feet, with the following findings and conditions. The applicant seeks a special permit to allow the creation of two lots from a 32,988 square foot parcel with land on Uncatina North, Cliff Road, and Noshon North under section 240-66-C. Six. This section of the bylaw states, "Any lot held in common ownership with any adjoining land as of one January 1981 not protected by subsection C4 may apply to the Planning Board for a special permit to construct a single-family residence if the lots are on roads which have been constructed as of April 1, 1982, in accordance with chapter 305, the subdivision rules and regulations of the Town of Falmouth, and if the lots are resubdivided so that the total area of the commonly held lots, when divided by the number of building permits to be requested, results in an area of land per single-family residence that equals at least 75% of the existing requirements for that zoning district. Furthermore, section 240-67A states that dimensional requirements as increased in 1984 would not apply to applications of not more than three adjoining lots. Therefore, under footnote 4, 15,000 square feet is required per lot, 75% of 20,000 square feet, rather than 75% of 40,000 square feet. The site is located in a residential B zoning district where the minimum required lot size is 40,000 square feet. The minimum required lot frontage is 100 lineal feet and the minimum lot width is 125 lineal feet. The Planning Board finds that each of the lots contains at least 15,000 square feet as required by section 240-67-A footnote 4. Furthermore, the Planning Board finds that the cliffs was originally subdivided in 1927 and that the roadways were constructed prior to April 1, 1982. The Planning Board also finds as required by section 240-66-C3 that almost all the lots have already been developed, except those lots set aside for permanent conservation, and that the majority of the house lots are comparable in size to the lots proposed by the applicant. The subject property is not within a water resource protection district nor within 300 feet of an estuary or other environmentally sensitive area specified in section 240-66-C3. The Planning Board considered the applicable criteria under section 240-16. Conditions: One, any adjustments to the lot lines shall require modification of this special permit."
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in seconded. Discussion of this motion? Any questions or comments on it? Okay, so absolutely none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. And we're moving on to discussion. The applicant is Veronica Perry for a preliminary plan review to subdivide one lot into three lots located at 146 Central Avenue, East Falmouth, BSS Design.
For the record, my name is Tom Bunker with BSS Design, a professional land surveyor. I've prepared this plan for Veronica Perry, who is in the audience with us here tonight. This lot is toward the north end of Central Avenue. encompasses a total of 4.88 acres, which is less than the five acre threshold, which was subjected to the analysis of development impact under coastal and ovalay district. It's not five acres and it's not five lots either. So we're not subject to that criteria. Currently, there are two houses on the property, making it basically non-conforming, a house here and a house here. These are numbers 146 and 148, Central Avenue. Number 146 is non-conforming to the street yard setback and to the side lot line setback. It's only 2.7 feet from the property line there. There's also a, as part of this whole property, there's a shed here, shown on a previous plan as encroaching. There's an odd little lot C there, which I believe was put there kind of to encapsulate that encroachment and separated from this lot. But this lot C is not part of this plan. And actually, on this plan, this shed, the house and this shed will be removed, so it will cure any of those non-conformities and encroachments that are on that side of the property. As we go back on the property, there's a low area over here with a bit of wetland. About 2,000 square feet of wetland on the property right here. And then it goes back to that heavy black line. The property actually does not have frontage on Eel Pond. This property wraps around here and has frontage down in front like that. The proposal for here is to create a short road with three lots, the smallest being up at the front, 40,000, 546 square feet. Lot 2, there's 56,100 square feet of upland. There's another 1,000 square feet of sort of wetland in the back. And then Lot 3 in the back is 85,300 square feet of upland. The road length is about 380 feet from here to the back of the layout. The physical length is a little bit shorter, but that's less than the dead-end maximum length in your bylaw. It will enter Central Ave in this location here. And the reason there's a curve in it, there's a utility pole right at this location. So we added this to get around. It can take an awful long time and money to get a utility pole moved. So we curved that around there. Changing this does not change, does not reduce the number of lots can get out of this property. So the road enters where this existing driveway comes out now and then goes back in. We're proposing that it be not paved, 16-foot wide gravel compacted crushstone surface, about 20 feet wide at the beginning for the first 50 feet or so, and then it'll narrow down to 16 feet. The drainage system, because this is so flat, drainage system will be basically side slope of 2% going off onto a grass shoulder. And then down to this property line here, we have a drainage, a vegetated drainage swale. This is better environmentally. If there were to be any nitrates, I mean, a runoff from a road typically is considered to contain nitrates. This runoff will go into a vegetated area where the vegetation will pick up any of the nitrates that are there. And in an unpaved road, conventional system with catch basins and leaching pits can sometimes fail. So this is the best system, you know, for a road on a basically flat surface that's unpaved and for so few houses and so short. Install town water in here, hydrant, and the other underground utilities, telephone, electric, and cable, whatever. As part of this, several waivers have been requesting, request to waive the requirement for street trees and the lighting, request to waive the requirement for the sidewalk. Obviously, the construction width and pavement we'd like to waive. And the centerline offset from the centerline of a proposed road to other roads, Hanson Circle is about, only about 210 feet away. But again, because this is really an increase of only one house, but there's two houses here now. It's such a small subdivision, I feel that this other last waiver would be warranted. Mr. Curry suggested that they show proposed layout for the driveway going out through here. I felt that there's, might be some questions about the slope of that. We can grade that driveway to be less than 10% slope, could be even less. But with about a 10% slope, there's only about three feet of fill at the bottom location right here. You know, cutting a little bit here and filling in the bottom so we can get a nice moderate slope of a driveway going out to the house site on Lot 3. On that back lot, it's only one the person might have question about, but there is adequate space setbacks from the wetlands and flood zones for the house and the septic system and everything. So it's adequately sized and shaped lot there for building on. That is our proposal at the moment. Take any questions you have.
Tom, could you just kind of indicate where future structures might be on each lot?
Lot 3, it'll be up here at the high point of the lot.
Okay.
Lot 2 could be anywhere, I mean, really could be anywhere, but I imagine it'd be in, you know, in this location, so from here that have a backyard. And on Lot 1, Lot 2, I imagine it would be back further, really comparable to this house, you know, at the top of this slope, you know, sort of overlooking that low wetland area, but far enough back, so that 100 feet back from there, so they don't have to go to conservation or anything for it.
Mr. Bunker, I know this, the road going up to Lot 3, if you look at the low point, which you said you may fill in.
Yes.
It's about elevation 6, and toward the top of that is elevation 20, that's 14 feet in about 100-foot length. That's far more than 10%.
Well, as I said, there's some filling, so if we fill that to...
How much filling is going to be there to bring that down to 10%?
We're going from about 6 feet, elevation 9, roughly, there'll be about three feet of fill, elevation 9 to elevation 20 is pushed back a little bit. That's, I have here 120 feet. So the 11 feet of slope and 120 feet of runs, that'd be a little less than 10%.
I don't have a scale, but looks like it's about 14%.
Not with the contours I drew on it.
What's the, what's with Clarabelle Road? Does that end at the property line? Is that an existing road?
That's an existing road. Actually, I sketched on here, there's a house right here and a house right here on Clarabelle Road. It's an existing private road. I mean, conceivably, if everybody along Clarabelle and River Haven Lane, they're private, if everybody there gave permission, conceivably, a house could put a driveway in through Clarabelle. But it'd be more difficult, they'd have to go through conservation because it's close to the Marsh and Coastal Bank.
Yes, Dan?
Will there be some sort of drainage for the road, or is it just going to be a gravel driveway to go to Lot 3?
That, I'm sure, would just be a gravel driveway. And particularly in the low area there, it'd be pitched away from the wetland to prevent any runoff from going toward the wetland.
Is that the only waiver that the applicant's looking for, is the paved road for gravel?
No, we wanted to waive the street trees and sidewalk and the lighting and the centerline offset from Hanson Circle.
Are we all satisfied? Yes, just...
Just one quick question. Access to the existing house on Lot 1, would it stay about where it is now? Is that what? Because I know you...
The plan...
That lot house wasn't down here to be removed, correct?
It's not required to be moved. This could be considered a house on the corner lot because it is 25 feet from Central. I think the plan, the plan will be to remove it and build a new house further back.
Okay.
With a driveway coming in off of the new road, Crystal Lane.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Could you go over the distance again for the waiver from Hanson Circle?
It's about 210 feet.
And what is the, the requirement is what?
300.
300, so it's 90 feet.
Yes.
So it doesn't look like there's any way you could solve that by moving it. You've only got 86 more feet to go with.
You'd be down at the other end of the property. I didn't want to put it on this side of the property because it would affect more houses.
I understand.
And I could point out, actually, there was a similar plan, was approved by the Planning Board in 2002, I believe. And that same waiver was granted, the centerline offset, in roughly the same location.
Yes, Mr. Bunker. The area that contains the proposed road, dead-end road, has a house on it. And wouldn't that be considered a lot, what, a non-buildable lot? You're asking for division into three lots.
Right.
It looks like there's four different parcels there to me.
That's the road layout, it's just wider than normal at the beginning. Kept it this wide so it'd have room for the drainage swale. The house structures will be removed, and this will be just a drainage area here. It's part of the road layout, it's not a building lot.
And Lot C, that little narrow piece, that's separate from the area that you just described?
It's not, it's owned by somebody else, it's not part of this plan.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And that house is going to be removed, then?
Yes. Yes.
If it wasn't removed, that would then be considered a lot, is that correct?
If it wasn't removed, it would, well, then it would have no road.
Yeah, you have a lot, house in the middle of the road.
Well, wouldn't you have a road?
Well, if this is...
The road doesn't go through the house.
If this, well, this is the road layout, but for one thing, this probably is less than 40,000 square feet, is what I mean by this, but it's...
Right, it would be a non-buildable lot, wouldn't it, no? It's a move point if you're going to take the house down.
Yes, the house, it's labeled on here to move that.
The lot line isn't clear, it fades a little bit. You can see it better when you're looking at it.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Okay.
Okay. So we'll schedule for our quick decision on your next meeting for the 20th, and I'll meet with Tom to settle a few details here.
Okay. Okay. Next on the agenda, applicant, planning board, amendments to rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land and rules and regulations governing special permits and site plan reviews, protocol for site visits. As you will remember, we discussed this at pretty good length at our prior meeting, and Brian was going to research as to where we had to convene, because it might be inconvenient for certain people who are working elsewhere, whatever. So, Brian?
So, paragraph 3, we changed the word, the site visit shall convene at Town Hall. We simply changed it to the, the open meeting shall convene at Town Hall. So, because this is pursuant to a vote of the board, we can coordinate that date. We have a quorum at the Town Hall, so if Doug is in East Falmouth, he doesn't have to come all the way to Town Hall. He can convene a meeting and he can meet us out at the site. We thought that'd be a simple cure.
Okay. That also means that there has to be a majority here convening in Town Hall.
Or some other public building, say the fire station in East Falmouth, or something like those lines.
Okay.
Or any other public building, right?
Correct. Yeah, we did add that.
Yep.
Is the supermarket a public building?
No, town-owned, isn't it?
Town-owned.
School, fire station.
Only if it's a Publix.
Yeah.
What's the nearest public building up near you, Ralph?
None that I know of.
Well, there's got to be one up there, isn't there?
DPW Barn from Mass Highway.
Okay.
Well, they have precinct meetings at the fairground.
Fairground. It's not a public meeting, it's not a public building.
Yeah, that's private.
Right, but if we can have precinct meetings there, maybe it's...
Well, if you got the DPW Barn, that's up, that's fine. We got something.
We'll figure it out as time goes...
We'll figure it out as time goes.
Remember, there will not be very many of these.
Right.
Because they are going to be requested by the Planning Board. They will be deemed of sufficient import to the Planning Board that we would request that. So, is everybody satisfied with this now that we can take a vote for it to be put into our rules and regulations? Okay, then I would like a motion that we accept the protocol for site visits as dated December 29, 2014.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. We moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained. Okay, so it's six in favor and one opposed. Are there future agenda items that people would like to see on the agenda? I would remind you that Brian has been keeping a list and he goes through it at the time. Yes, Ralph?
Well, first of all, Chairman, I'd like to request, just since this has just been voted in, I'd like to request a site visit for the property that was presented to us this evening for the subdivision.
Everybody else feel similarly inclined?
Central Avenue, Central Avenue.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so Brian will schedule it and...
You want a meeting on the site on Central Avenue? Just to give a quick vote?
Okay.
Just a motion, just a motion?
Well...
I second Ralph's motion.
Right. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. And Brian will schedule it with the owner and set up a time, so on.
Off we go.
Okay. Any other future agenda? Yes, Ralph?
Well, going back, I asked last meeting for status on the Tavares decision.
We can't do that, it's in litigation.
Just very quickly, I had a conversation with Attorney Duffy. We're going through discovery and interrogatories. Attorney Duffy will brief the board when it's necessary. Is my quick message to the board.
Yeah, that's what I...
He will brief us at our next meeting, is that what you said?
No. I had a quick, just so you know, I had a quick discussion with Frank. We are going through what's known as a discovery process and interrogatories. We'll be doing that tomorrow. And once we finish up this paperwork, Frank will try to find time to brief the board.
All right.
Anything else?
Is it almost time to start back up on that coastal resiliency? Are we going to be doing some homework during the winter?
I can put that down. We will be having a webinar, a webinar with the folks from New Jersey.
Oh, really?
So let me brief you on that. It's coming up, Marlene, it's coming up fairly soon. So we will be having that update, and we will have essentially a telegraph discussion with the folks from New Jersey. Put that down so you'll know what's going on.
As you'll remember, that we were using a lot of what they experienced to teach us.
Right.
Yeah.
This is actually being put on by webinar, but we'll brief you on that.
Thank you.
It should be very interesting.
It'll be extremely interesting.
Is this something that if people cannot attend, you can get into it and...
I don't know.
You don't know?
I don't know, I don't know how the gadgets work. I just know they'll beam us together.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Yes, Paul.
Again, I'd like to ask to get an update of the Cape Cod Commission study of Group 28 at one of the future meetings.
It started January 1st, and we hope to have a joint meeting in February with the Board of Selectmen, where both the Cape Cod Commission and McMahon Associates will brief the board on their, on their...
Is that due in February?
That's what I'm shooting for, late February.
Thank you.
Are we going to start the accessory bylaw process?
The staff is, that's what we said that we wanted them to do, is to look into that. So it's going.
We are going to have an important future discussion on the 20th after the Board of Selectmen have a discussion about themselves with regards to affordable housing issues. Hope to be able to bring that to the board's attention at your next meeting in this building.
Okay. Anybody else have anything else?
Same for next week.
We each have our own agenda.
20th is the next one.
Items.
Okay, so we'll move on to general correspondence and, as you know...
Just stand by, we'll probably try to schedule your meeting on site on Tuesday the 13th. Just keep that in the back of your mind, please.
As you know, this form was in here and you've all signed it, and I took the liberty to date the ones that didn't date it over at the side, that they were signed tonight. There is a Falmouth Wants a Why Way, Community Information Meeting, Come Find Out What's Happening, Wednesday, January 28th, at 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., Falmouth Public Library, the Herman Foundation Room. And so this is information on people who are supporting the Y are going to be presenting it at that point in time. And I'm not sure, you put this in here, we all approved that, that's the letter that went in support of the Oddfellas Hall, remember? But it was in the correspondence, was there a reason it was in here? Because everybody approved it, they read it.
We did.
And approved it before.
Surprise!
Just happened to be in here, okay.
Just to see if you're paying attention.
Yeah, it's there to see, right.
Is there a time for that meeting on that Falmouth Wants a Why?
Yeah, it is at 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on January 28th in the Herman Room. And the purpose of this event is to report the findings of our research and continue to listen to the ways in which the Y could best meet some of the identified needs. It's the YMCA Cape Cod that's presenting it, I presume. So, our next meeting is January 20th, and that will be...
Will be a joint, right now, scheduled to be a joint meeting with the Board of Appeals. We'll be talking about the General Code report, but in my discussions with the Board of Appeals, we'd like to keep it with a little bit higher plan than some of the things in General Code. I think the Board of Appeals would like to tell the board how it finds working with the bylaw from an operational standpoint, some of the difficulties they find, and then a back-and-forth discussion about, you know, some priorities, shared work, go from there. We will have a quick business meeting, too, because we need to make a quick decision on your preliminary plan, and some A&amp;Rs came in, of course, today. But we'll try to get that quickly done.
So we'll stay at 6:30 then on the 20th?
I think what I'd like to do is start it up at 6:30, do our business meeting, and then meet with the Board of Appeals right after then.
Okay. Okay, so that is the end of our agenda. Could I have a motion for adjournment?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
I'll move in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.